... prior to the completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write the item number on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers, in order to be recognized, must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. We'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair Sturmphels.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are starting with the General Administrative Function, Item A, Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda, but Within the Jurisdiction of the Commission. The Commission is prohibited by law from discussing issues that are not on the agenda, brought to them at this time. Is there anyone who would like to speak on items not on the agenda? Great, we'll give you a minute. Thank you, and you can come forward to the podium if you need help adjusting it, let us know, and please introduce yourself and any affiliation that you're representing this evening.
My name is Clint.
One moment, can we make sure his mic is on? If you look at the base of your, the black mic, sure he should help you out.
Green light. My name is Clint, I am the CEO of Ria Corporation or Ria Farms, P-H-A-R-M-S. The Ria, anyway, Ria Corporation, we, for two and a half years, we've been operating in Davis, we're a dietary supplement manufacturer. I now have space over at 3680 Industrial Boulevard, office and warehouse space, zoned as a business park. What we would like to do is, right now, we make products, capsules, oral sprays, herbal products, health, all the organic health products, dietary supplements. Anyway, we would like to get into doing dietary supplements, or, I'm sorry, integrating THC into those dietary supplements. So what we do is, we start with a resin, like, either a powder or a resin, which is the extract, the refined extract of, after extraction. So we are like a pharmaceutical company, and my problem is that we're zoned business park, and I don't think that the California Department of Public Health, after much outcry, has created a separate type N, actually type N and type P designation for infused products. That's essentially what we are. It's under type six, there's a, even the city attorneys and the legislators that created MERS, M-C-S, RSA, they did not really understand how the processing of cannabis. So there's cultivation, which, you know, like, ten of the twelve licenses are cultivation, but then you take the bud and you extract it, either in a non-solvent or solvent way, like butane would be a solvent, CO2 might be considered a non-solvent, but those are manufacturing, so all the manufacturing was thinking of extraction. It should not be called manufacturing here or in any place, it should be called extraction. But then there's really no, if you're an edible company and you're trying to make chocolates, that's not, that's wholly different, it's all, we're not using, it's wholly different processing to have a bottling line where you're filling little droppers or oral sprays, where we're just taking a finished ingredient, which is from extraction, and putting microdoses into, you know, 10,000 bottles, and then selling those to dispensaries. So that kind of edible manufacturing, either, you know, capsules or sprays, tinctures, we have syrups that get added to water or Sprite or whatever, those, some of it can be considered food, but the problem is, we should not be limited to industrial, M1 and M2.
Can you provide your last remarks?
We should not be limited to, I would like to take this up on, after, but all the edible companies should not be limited to industrial. All the industrial spaces in West Sacramento are basically gone, and we would operate in small spaces.
If you could wrap up your final buzz, please.
We would operate in small spaces, we are not, all the edible, you know, a commercial kitchen, that's not a warehouse, that's in an industrial space. We need to be able to operate in a business park.
So, Mr. Cleary, we're, we can't discuss this at this time, I'll give my fellow commissioners an opportunity to provide any questions or comments, but what I would recommend is that you work with staff, this might be something that they can discuss with you further, and if warranted, they could bring it forward as a discussion or workshop item for us to have, to engage in a dialogue before any application process starts.
Yeah.
So that might be a good time for you to provide, you know, a presentation, background information, et cetera.
Sure, absolutely, yeah, it's just, we're, we shouldn't be lumped in to leaf and trim.
So do any fellow commissioners have any questions or comments for the speaker?
No questions at this time.
Okay, so I would encourage you to talk with staff, if you want to give him your contact information, that would be great, thank you so much for...
To, I'm sorry, to David, or?
Whoever would be appropriate, I would imagine, maybe David?
Yeah, we actually have met with this gentleman earlier this week, so I am familiar with where, what he is doing and what his requests are.
Great, okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excellent, is there anyone else who'd like to make a presentation on item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item B, Correspondence and Staff Communication from the Planning Commission Secretary. When Mr. Tilly is ready, he can provide that.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Austin, I do have a few items to note for you this evening. Wanted to just briefly go over three items that have been at City Council recently, or will be at City Council recently, that have been before the Planning Commission at our, at one or two of our previous meetings. Two items last night at Council, the first one was the one regarding the electric fence topic in the limited industrial zone, and also the infamous fence regarding the goats that we had here before at the Planning Commission, I think at our previous meeting. Council did move that as second reading last night, Council did make some changes to how it came out from Planning Commission, so I wanted to report on that. They allowed it by right in the limited industrial zone west of Interstate 80, but east of Interstate 80, especially in the area around where the Meadowdale neighborhood is, they prescribed that to be a conditional use on that side of the freeway. So they sort of took a hybrid of what staff had originally recommended, and then also what the Planning Commission ultimately recommended to them. So that was second reading last night, so that ordinance will be effective in 30 days. Second one was the Seaport, 3705 Seaport project, this was a large cannabis project that came before you at our previous meeting involving indoor cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution. They also did second reading on the necessary municipal code changes and development, implementing ordinance for the development agreements last night, so that also will be effective in 30 days. And then, lastly, I wanted to note, you recall the discussion we had regarding the non-conforming uses on the property on South River Road, 1781 South River Road, that item was appealed to the City Council, and originally was going to be heard last night, but at a mutual agreement of the landowner and the city, that will, that appeal now be held on November 1st. So I will report back to you on the outcome of that, once that appeal is adjudicated. So at this time, I'll close my remarks, thank you.
Great, thank you, moving on to Item C, Ex parte communications. Planning Commissioners should disclose any communications they have had on the agenda at this time, and I'll just let Planning Commissioners know that it would be appreciated if you provided additional information about the nature of any ex parte communication, so not just who you spoke with, but a general summary of what the content of that conversation was. So actually, I'll start on my left with Commissioner Leibig.
No.
Commissioner Laporte.
No.
Vice Chair Sturmphels, Commissioner Castillo.
None.
Thank you, and I have none to report as well. First item on the Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda, consideration and approval of the minutes from September 7th. I have one question, so Pledge of Allegiance, does it matter if we want to put the person's first name for Mr. Harvey? I don't know if we, if that's...
I don't think we had his first name.
I can provide it if we'd like to make that...
Yes, if you...
So it's P-H-I-L, Phil.
Okay.
So if we want to make that modification...
Yes, we can add that.
I'll move approval of the September 7th, 2017 minutes with the addition of Chairperson Austin.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor say, oh, actually, can we do a roll call vote on this one? It's controversial.
Commissioner Laporte?
Aye.
Commissioner Leibig?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturmphels?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Castillo?
Aye.
And Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries, moving on to Item Two on the irregular agenda, this is a public hearing regarding proposed municipal code amendments related to cannabis manufacturing, wholesale logistics, distribution, transportation, and indoor commercial cultivation facilities in the limited and light industrial zones. Mr. Tilly.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Austin, as you stated, we aren't here in a public hearing tonight regarding some proposed municipal code amendments related to these cannabis uses, as I'm sure as the Commission will recall, we have discussed cannabis-related uses in our industrial zones at several of our recent meetings, and we have been making incremental changes to our municipal code to help get ourselves ready for when the state begins issuing licenses for cannabis uses, which, as of at least last week, the head of the new, newly named Bureau of Cannabis Control at the state level, they will be issuing licenses January 1st. Those will be temporary licenses, but they will be issuing them, it sounds like, no matter what, so it's very important that we make sure, that we establish what we will allow, what we will not allow, and under what parameters. So tonight, what I'm hoping may very well be the, sort of the last set of municipal code adjustments that we need to make to make sure we're positioned for these primary cannabis uses that we have been entertaining so far. So this particular item would seek to add those cannabis uses similar to the other ones as conditional uses in the limited industrial and light industrial zoning districts. And up on the screen, we have a map showing where those areas are located, where the blue area is the limited industrial, and then the red areas are the light industrial. The areas that are shaded have light industrials or limited industrial on them, however, they are subject to planned development text and previous development agreements, primarily support or business park, and also then the ports, seaway property. So the substance of tonight's changes would be to add cannabis manufacturing as a conditional use in the limited industrial, light industrial zone, as well as our, as the distribution facilities and the indoor cultivation. The definitions for all of these businesses will remain the same, those have been previously considered by the Planning Commission and Council, so this would really be adding these to the matrix. Staff is bringing these forward in this format because we actually have multiple applications that are pending that would need some or all of these same municipal code changes. So rather than having three or four applications before you, you know, proposing the same things, or just having one of them try to carry the water for the others, and so staff, at this point, given that we have multiple applications at the same time, ones that will be coming before you over your next couple of meetings, we thought at this time we would need to take care of these last couple of changes, you know, in one ordinance, and then let those projects come before you for their use permit consideration and development agreement recommendations, and not have to go over the same municipal code changes, you know, for the same projects over and over again. So I did want to address on the table that I have in the staff report at the beginning of page two, I'd like to clarify a few of those. At the time the staff report was written, some of these changes were still pending before the City Council, some of which they took action on last night, and of course, those ordinances are going into effect 30 days after second reading, so there's sort of a series of ordinances that are coming into effect, you know, sort of in each month. Primary example would be the indoor cultivation that did, I know that did come through the Planning Commission at a prior meeting, but Council only did second reading on that so last night, and of course, we were, didn't want to pre-assume what, how the Council was going to act on any of these items, so, you know, at our next staff report, we would say that the example indoor cultivation would be conditionally permitted in our heavy industrial zone, but even that ordinance won't be effective for another 30 days. So the summary of the, summary of the municipal code changes before you tonight would be to add cannabis manufacturing, distribution, indoor cultivation, its conditional uses in the limited industrial and light industrial zones, with a use permit, development agreement, and subject to the same requirements for the safety and security plan, the ventilation standards, et cetera, as we've applied in the other areas. So at this time, I'll close my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll open up to questions and discussions by my fellow commissioners, and I think it will start on my right with Commissioner Castillo.
I don't have any questions right now.
And Vice Chair Sturmphels? Commissioner Laporte?
No questions.
Commissioner Leibig?
I'm going to hold until after the hearing.
Oh, okay, great, I'll open the public hearing. I currently don't have any requests to speak, are there any interested parties wanting to speak on this item? Seeing none, would you like to speak on this item? You're welcome to.
I guess I'm...
Well, yeah, if you'd like to approach, and then when you're done, fill out another speaker card, please.
Would it help, or, I am proposing that we add a new type of business type, and then allow it to, because right now, this, this list of uses, and, you know, it has manufacturing as only being in M1, M2, and I am proposing that we be, that a new one be proposed based on the fact that there's new types of businesses, which is the type N and P, by the California Department of Public Health. So I think this list was created before these were created, and these, I'm saying, they're not even light industrial, they're like, you know, having a bottling line or a, or a commercial kitchen. It seems unreasonable to have to be limited to those zones. So my only question on this point is, can that, can the final, you know, acceptance of this ordinance or be tabled until that gets discussed and added?
Well, thank you very much for your, for your comments. So I'll, I'll respond, and I'll give my fellow commissioners a chance to respond as well. A little bit of history on the zoning ordinance changes, the Planning Commission entertained the idea of making comprehensive changes together, but it was decided both of the Planning Commission and at City Council to take zoning amendment changes on a case-by-case basis, so my understanding, and planning staff can confirm this, is that we are considering zoning amendment, or zoning amendments or zoning changes, once we've received applications that would require such, that are substantially complete. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
That is correct, that has been the direction from the Council and the City Manager's Office.
So, yeah, so hopefully that's clear enough, but what we would be proposing is to, we intend to move forward with staff recommendation, or at least explore what we currently have, and I'll take, I will take under advisement, and I'll have my fellow commissioners do the same, your proposal to include a business park under the suggested land use matrix, which currently is the ML and M1 zones.
And Madam Chair, I could, I don't know that that is what I'm saying.
Because this does require a noticed public hearing to make changes to the zoning code, it would not be possible to take action on the request at this time. That would need to be noticed for a future hearing before the Council, for the Commission and the Council, and also, I think it would be appropriate to, if you wanted to give staff direction to consider it, they would want to look at it and come back to you with a recommendation.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I'm, I don't know that I'm asking for a business park to be added, I'm saying that extraction and cultivation absolutely should be in there, but having a bottling line, or a commercial kitchen, or just making edibles, which are, you know, kind of like baking, that doesn't seem like that should be limited to that, and it should be allowed in business park. So I'm, I'm saying that there should be another line that says edibles, edible manufacturing, which is wholly different than extraction.
So are there questions or any items that commissioners would like to discuss with this particular speaker?
No, that answered my question right there.
Okay, anyone else?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I'll turn it back again, I'll start with Commissioner Leibig, opposing Planning Commission, Commissioner Leibig, if you have additional questions or comments.
No, I'm still, I'm still mulling over that one, and I appreciate that, maybe we want to bring that back at a different time, but that would require changing some definitions as well, and, so, sorry, I was stalling on that one.
We can also come back to you if you want to think about...
No, generally, I'm in favor of staff recommendation, I have some hesitation over the indoor cultivation, but I am generally in favor of staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Laporte?
No questions or comments.
No questions or comments right now, okay, thank you, Vice Chair Sturmphels?
I want to thank staff for a couple of things, one, separating out zoning changes from applications, I think it's something that we, we're at a point now that's very helpful for us to do, and second, for taking a holistic view of this at this point, I think is the right thing to do, we've, we've done several application-specific one-offs, and now I think that we've gone through the rigmarole of discussing every different use and where it, where it should and should not be, I appreciate kind of taking the holistic view, I also appreciate the simplicity of pretty much allowing distribution, manufacturing, indoor cultivation in all the same zones across the city. I think largely, although we find a lot of differences in the business line itself, the risks associated with the business lines are the same, and so, maybe with manufacturing being slightly different, but, so, there, there not being a whole lot of difference in between one and the other, kind of, the logic behind the proposal to kind of standardize them all makes sense to me. I do share some of Commissioner Leibig's hesitation on the indoor cultivation, which is not a surprise to anyone here, but largely feel like this is the right move, and probably at the right time here, too, just to standardize, so thank you for the work on that.
Commissioner Castillo?
I'm supportive of staff's recommendation, particularly even though we changed the designation for M1 and ML, the fact that there's a development agreement and a condition use permit opportunity, and that the Commission or the Council will be able to review each application, I think I'm comfortable with that.
Great, thank you. I'd like to echo some of the concerns about the indoor cultivation, and something that gets me comfortable with that is that these will remain conditional use permits, so that we can look at both, for me, the size of the indoor cultivation space, as well as that each applicant separately and independently, so those are, those are two areas that I would have concerns. But yes, I'm generally supportive of staff recommendation, and then to the speaker's concerns, I don't mean to be dismissive of your concerns, I do want us to have a robust conversation that is publicly noticed, and that we can gather additional information, because quite frankly, the whole, the whole cannabis discussion is, requires us all to learn a lot about industry practices in an area that is, I don't think any of our specialties, it'd be like learning all about healthcare, or learning all about construction on the fly, and so we're learning as we go, so I welcome learning more about some of the intricacies of these industries, and then how that, how our responsibilities and land use apply to that. So with that, I will entertain additional discussion, questions for staff or a motion?
Okay, hearing no other additional staff, or no additional comments, I will recommend staff's, sorry, I will move staff's recommended action.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say nay, any abstentions, the motion carries. Do you need to read an appeal, Mr. Tilly?
This item, that was a recommendation, so this item will be proceeding to Council regardless.
Okay, great, thank you very much. We're moving on to Item Three on the agenda, public hearing regarding Resolution 17-16 PC, recommending approval of a development agreement and conditional use permit for cannabis logistics, distribution, transportation at 3911 West Capitol Avenue, Mr. Hardy.
Good evening, Chair, Commission. So this project is, was reviewed before for the manufacturing and ordinance changes for the ML zone, as well as a development agreement and the use permit at an earlier meeting, subsequent after that meeting, went on to Council, and it was asked of the applicant if they wanted to do distribution, and thus, they did, and we gave them the process to move forward, so subsequently, the item two that went forth needed to happen to allow distribution, zoning ordinance changes in the ML, which we just heard, so, high-end, which is the name of the applicant that was used on the application, was the former, kind of, general term we were using, but the legally registered name on the development agreement is the FFCP organization, so it's the same body, same individuals, it hasn't changed. Part of their manufacturing review and zoning ordinance amendments that the Council reviewed did recommend that they change the high-end name to something else in the future, and when they are in the process of looking at that, the DAs can be reassigned, there's a clause in there to be resigned to with a new name per city approval. We sat down with the city attorney as well to go over that, so I just wanted to connect the dots of, we're talking about the same organization, just some of the names were used differently at different times. So the request is to add the distribution for their existing manufacturing process at the 3911 West Capitol, we are in discussions with, you know, fire and police of the same provisions as, as any other distribution in town, such as Robo Wellness, and so they're, we met yesterday about the site plan and what they need to do, the conditions that are in the use permit, speak to their security plan, which is very applicable in this case, and then the DA would be whatever the recommendation of the Commission would be, and then would go on to Council for their consideration, so with that, I will conclude my comments, any questions, please let me know.
Great, thank you, so before I open the public hearing, I'll do the same, I'll start with Commissioner Leibig, questions for staff?
Thank you, I do have some questions for staff prior to opening up the public hearing, Justin, thank you for the presentation. I have, I have two questions, one is just a very, very basic question, when, when we approved the original manufacturing project, I assumed that they would have to ship the product out, and, so can you describe the difference between that and the transportation and distribution that we're adding? Like, what is the, what is the difference between that, so?
Well, there's multiple license types for different pieces of the distribution process, so it was sort of, I don't think we, the Council directly asked, do you plan on doing distribution, and the applicant said yes, and so that required a different license type than the manufacturing, which wasn't under the purview of that ordinance amendment that was reviewed prior for their project.
Guys, my question is actually even more basic than that, what's the difference between them just shipping their product out of the building and the transportation and distribution?
If I could, I think the difference is between who does the transportation.
Okay.
Without, as I understand it, without a distribution, transportation license, they would have to contract with someone who is licensed to come to the facility and remove the product.
So in other words, like vendors would come and pick up the product and then take it away, that would...
Right.
That would not include transportation and distribution for this?
I believe that's correct.
So in other words, like vendors would come and pick up the product and then take it away?
Right.
That would not include transportation and distribution for this?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. And so what we're looking at is the, the applicant seeking to distribute themselves?
Yes. Now, as I understand it, that distribution license would allow them to distribute for other manufacturers as well. I don't know, I don't know if that's part of their current business plan, but that you would be, similar to River Wellness, you would be authorizing a distribution business.
Separate from the land use issue, though, so, thank you. And then my second question, it's actually, I keep looking at the wrong packet. There we go. Under the development agreement, the, the quarterly payments, rep, sorry, reference cultivation, just for clarification, this, this project does not include cultivation, correct?
Correct.
Do we want to modify that?
Which section are you looking at?
Oh, you know, I'm in the staff report. Hold on. This, this may not be in the actual...
We'll, we'll, we'll verify that, so how the development agreement reads, but this project before you tonight, the development agreement is specific for the distribution. They actually already have the development agreement approved for the manufacturing use.
Great, okay.
And there's no cultivation at this time.
I'll read, those are my only two comments, so I'll read the rest of it, and I'll read, I'll try and find that in the back, back section.
Fortunately, we have the author of the development agreement here in the audience, here with us tonight, so we'll get through that.
I'm sure he's got it memorized, right?
I could throw out a number if you'd like.
Thank you.
So I, actually, I can speak to a little bit. If you look at section 1.19 of the, of the development agreement, it talks about a project means physical improvement of property as a wholesale cannabis logistics, distribution, and transportation facility, and I believe there's also a definition of facility, means the physical improvement of the property used for, used by developer for the conduct of its operations, and then exhibit A describes the activities to be conducted under this development agreement as warehousing and safe storage and transportation.
Okay, and this is the text that matters?
Right. So if you find, but if you do find somewhere in there where we mentioned cultivation, please do point it out, and we'll fix that when it gets to the council.
Great, okay, thank you.
Assuming you approve it.
And recognizing this is not your last opportunity to speak, you'll have another chance during and after the public hearing. Commissioner Laporte?
No, wait till the public hearing.
Vice Chair Sturmphels?
I just, I just want to add to Commissioner Leibig's comment. My understanding of the different licensing classifications is very similar to the beverage industry, liquor industry where, so they, they could ship the product out, but they couldn't distribute it to a retailer. So, so they would have to, if they didn't have the distribution license, they would have to ship the product to a distributor, and pay the distributor to pick it up, and then distribute it to a retailer. So the liquor industry's set up to have all these different kind of separations of responsibility within different companies, and this industry was originally set up like that, but then the recent changes allowed folks to have multiple licenses, and so absent this, they would, they would pay a distributor who would come pick up the product, take it to their distribution center, and then when a retailer purchased it, or they sold it to a retailer, would then deliver it to the retailer for them. So I think...
That helps.
That's my, at least my understanding, and I'm sure the applicant will weigh in further, but...
That is our understanding as well.
Thanks. Commissioner Castillo?
I don't have a question.
With that, I will open the public hearing, and I'll start with if the applicant would like to address any questions or provide a presentation, you're invited to, you're not, we're not expecting that, so, yeah.
Good afternoon. My name is Erica Graves. Nice to be here in front of you again. Just to touch on the, how this started, when we first filed the application, there was the law stated that we couldn't have vertical integration, so we couldn't hold a distribution or a transportation license and hold the manufacturing license. When that changed, kind of, that piqued our interest into actually transportation, because at that time, transportation and distribution were still separate license. So we originally had discussed a transportation license, and then the law changed again, which is where it exists now, and distribution absorbed transportation, and so that's how we're here today. Mimicking much of what you said, we, if we didn't have a distribution license, we can negotiate contracts between the manufacturer and the dispensary, but we can't exactly, we can't effectuate the sale. It has to go, much like the alcohol industry, it has to go through a distributor, which is a pretty significant cost. So just from a cost standpoint, being vertically integrated was a big motivation for us, as well as safety. When we were discussing this with fire and police, you know, being able to handle the transportation in and out, in of source material, out of final product, being able to do that under one roof in our own company is much safer. We don't have to have a third party. It's just another area, barrier of entry where nefarious activity could occur. So those are really our, our main motivations. Certainly, down the line, we don't want to bite off too much, but if, like you said, we can distribute for other companies, not, not our plan right now, but who, who knows? So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for the applicant?
I have one, and it's just a curiosity. What does FFCP stand for?
It doesn't stand for anything. It was just a generic corporation that was formed, because you had to, it has to be through a nonprofit, and so we, it, it was just formed because it was a startup, and we wanted to have it to show we were being responsible, with the intention of doing a DBA later.
So now that it's no longer required to be a nonprofit, you're refiling?
Yes, so we filed for an LLC, and then the LLC will absorb the, the nonprofit, essentially.
Is there, is there any changes in ownership between the nonprofit and the LLC?
No, nothing has changed at all.
Thank you.
And there's no cultivation, and I promise I will not come back here a third time and ask for cultivation.
All right, so we've heard from the applicant. Is there anyone else who would like to comment during this public hearing period? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing period. Turn it back over to my fellow commissioners for additional questions, discussion, or motion.
Okay. If there is no discussion, and there are no modifications, I am going to move staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any, any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously.
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the planning commission on this matter to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 15 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you. The last part of our meeting is informal discussion. Are there any informal discussions to be held?
October is planning month.
October is planning month. Thank you for sharing that.
So we will be back here in two weeks with a pretty substantive agenda to help celebrate our planning month. So if any commissioners are unavailable to make our next meeting on the 19th, please let us know as soon as you know. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Laporte, for letting us know. I assume Commissioner Vu will be back for our next meeting.
All right, I will turn, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.